Yes, we're going to open up the meeting. Madam Secretary, roll call?
Counsel Ozy.
Present.
President Counsel Lapia.
Present.
President Counsel Stavid.
Present.
President Counsel Walsh.
Present.
President Counsel Annette, absent.
Okay, we're having this meeting tonight with a representative from Waste Management and our Commissioner of the DPW, Andy Hall. And there's been a lot of complaints and performance issues regarding both trash and yard waste throughout the city. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
If, so that we can allow other counselors, if they have questions, that they can speak that are not on the Public Works Committee. So I heard a motion for that, to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor to suspend the rules to allow other counselors to speak?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And I'm not certain who's on the Public Works and who's not, but feel free, okay, if you're not on to raise your hand and I'll recognize you. So I want to thank Andy and I apologize to the Waste Management gentleman, Ed Pazek.
Pazek.
Okay, thank you for coming in tonight. And we, is there, would a counselor like to, Counsel Stavid?
Thank you, Counsel Ozy. Ed, we've met before when we were having a lot of issues in Ward Two. And folks said that those delays were more focused on Ward Two than they were on the rest of the city. But I think now, you know, this has all come to light, especially with the yard waste in the last month or so, that this has just been like nothing I've seen before. I kind of quickly went back and looked at emails that I've sent out to constituents, to my email list, you know, as a blast email. And I've sent out 18 emails in probably a 20-month period to Ward Two residents just related to trash delays and yard waste delays and all. And I understand things happen, you know, and if, you know, my own neighborhood last night, they didn't, and from what I understand, my neighborhood happens to be the last neighborhood picked up on a Monday evening. They didn't get there, leave the barrel out, they get it in the morning. You know, I checked my cameras at home and I saw that they were there about nine o'clock this morning, no big deal. But these leaf bags that have been sitting out in snowbanks, rainstorms and all for weeks, I mean, what happened? What happened? And, you know, and before you answer, I kind of gave you folks the benefit of the doubt back in October when we had a couple of, you know, those really bad windstorms. And I said, okay, well, it blew down, you know, a higher-than-average, you know, amount of leaves which created more leaves on the ground and people, you know, raked up and all. But eventually the leaves are gone and it seems that the problem seems to have gotten worse. You know, if anything, if that was the case for the delays back in October, then it certainly shouldn't have been the case in November and December.
Yes, first of all, I appreciate your understanding of the situation in October. It is true that we did get some pretty serious wind and took down quite a few leaves. I mean, the volumes at the end of October were very high. So that caused us to run behind at that point. But more recently, in the month of November, we did have a situation where, sorry, we had a situation where with the schedule, we had requested a schedule change, and I could speak to that in a moment. But I think what that did was the calendar that was sent to all the residents was already published, it was already mailed. And with that change, you know, I think it was just the genie was out of the bottle, so to speak. And we ended up running the week of Thanksgiving. Residents weren't necessarily expecting that based off of the way the calendar was originally published. And then what ended up happening was we ran the, we didn't run the following week, and there were certainly residents who were expecting that. So, you know, I think that's where we just, that confusion, that level of confusion that struck the city was where, you know, we just haven't seen that before. There was a lot of people who just waited until when they thought it would be collected and then it wasn't collected then. And I can tell you that that week before, we ran, and it was definitely very light that week. So, you know, that's something that we had, we requested after we had seen the, the schedule had come out, it had been run by us. We didn't notice before the time of printing that there was a week that had changed from one year to the next. We had built our schedule based off of what we thought the year before was. And when we made the request to change, it was granted, but, you know, I think that was really our fault that we didn't do our due diligence in looking at that calendar upfront. And, you know, certainly we will do that in the future and we will certainly not ever try to request a change sort of midstream like that.
Well, can I continue, Counsel?
Go ahead.
Thank you. While I understand that there was that confusion with the last week and all, there, you know, a lot of us, in my newsletter for, you know, the last few months, I had pumped out that yellow flyer that had the week ending November 30th. So, as well as shared it on Nextdoor, on Facebook and all, I know other counselors put it out on their Facebook pages. So I think for the most part, the only people that were caught off guard by that one were the people that had the cards, they might have tacked them up on their refrigerator and aren't engaged with social media or email and all. So in Ward Two, that wasn't so much the problem, it was the missed streets or missed houses. You know, go down the street, pick up a few, leave a few. And on the dates that the residents expected the stuff to be picked up, I mean, I had a guy tonight, you know, you're out there today picking up stuff. We all compiled lists last week, you know, I blasted it out to my residents, anybody that's been missed, please send me your address. And I compiled the list, I know the other counselors did as well, sent them over to Lisa. And I double-checked my list tonight and Apple Street was on it. And I had a resident call me as I was on my way down here tonight and said, not only did they not come down the street and grab the yard waste, but it looks like they did on either ends of the street. He said, we had a truck come down, just come down the street, picked up our trash. Now, Apple Street is as wide as a driveway. It's a two-way street, but it's a very narrow street. And it wasn't an automated truck. You know, it was guys just grabbing the barrels and dumping them in. And he said they were hitting the odd side of the street. And he said to them, geez, why don't you just reach over and grab them from the other side, you won't have to come back down. No, we're going to come back down. He said they did the odd side of the street, missed the last odd house on the street, took off, and that was the last they saw of them. So now, the even side of that street, that's about as wide as a driveway, still needs to have somebody come back and grab the trash. I mean, there seems to be no rhyme or reason to what's going on, to how certain places are missed, or is it experiencing a high volume of turnover with employees, they're having a hard time getting, attracting help?
So, I mean, I'm not sure about the Apple Street situation that you just described. It certainly strikes me as strange as well. So, I mean, that's something I just made a note of so that we can look into that. What I can say is specific, more specific to the yard waste, is that, you know, just in general, yard waste is a tough service to offer. It's sort of a, kind of a, if you think of it this way, we offer the trash and recycling every week, it's a very regular service. But then the yard waste comes and it's sort of a service that's added on top of that. And at this time of year, it becomes, I'll be honest, it's just difficult to gauge, you don't, I mean, with trash and recycling, you know that you're going to pick up one barrel at each location. With yard waste, you don't know how many bags or barrels somebody's going to set out at a given house, at a given street, we don't know when the leaves are going to fall, all of that. And then on top of that, what we find is that, you know, with trash and recycling, we have the same drivers usually, unless somebody's on vacation, dedicated to servicing the same route, so they get familiar with it. With yard waste, that's not always the case because we're pulling people who may not work in Lynn on a regular basis, because as I described, it's sort of like this add-on type of service above and beyond the regular work. So, I mean, that could be an explanation as to why we're seeing, why, you know, some streets may not have been collected. As far as the, you know, going down the street, picking up some and leaving others, that, I mean, it's difficult for me to speak to that. I do know that, I mean, we have our GPS, we can look and see if we've gone down a street or not. You know, it's certainly possible that a driver could pick up everything and leave one behind. It seems a little unseemly that that would happen. I mean, it is possible too that.
It happens.
Maybe it happens, or does the truck drives down the street and somebody remembers, oh, it's yard waste day, and then they come out after the fact. I know that happens too, you know, so it could be a little of both.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Shear.
Thank you. How are you doing, Ed?
Good thinking.
Good. So, I mean, I got to be right up front with you. Up until two, three years ago, I had no real big issues with waste management. And it seems the further we get into our relationship, I'm having a lot of problems with waste management. I'm having problems with the fact that streets are being missed, this whole leaf thing, all the way back to October, people were told, just leave your stuff out, the trucks will come by, they never did. Some of those streets, the leaves are still out, that we never went by and got them. I don't like the condition of some of the vehicles that are coming into the city, they're leaving oil stains on the roadways. Up in my neighborhood today, the truck that you guys sent up there wasn't the one that's picking up the barrels, it was two guys. And they were doing a decent job, but there's oil all over the street. And if it's on my street, it's on other streets. Now, also, a couple of weeks ago, your driver just drove right over my barrel. Didn't do anything to, didn't get out of the truck to see if he smashed it, broke it, left it there. Just drove over it and kept on going to the next house. So, you know, and other than me saying that, I have no proof of it, but I do have some proof that your drivers are not respecting the city. And I'm going to ask one of my counselors to show you a video. And if this is the way you guys encourage your employees to pick up trash in our city, then I don't know if we want to continue to do business with you. Because I got to tell you that as a counselor, a ward counselor, but also as a council president and hearing every single day from my fellow counselors how upset they are, because they're hearing every single day from their constituents how upset they are. If we want to continue the relationship with waste management in the future, I'm going to be, you guys have to do a better job. You've got less trucks in the city doing the job, it's not enough vehicles doing the city. The leaves this year, the yard waste, that is the worst job I've ever seen anybody do. Any company, I've been a counselor now for 16 years, and that is the worst I've ever seen anybody working with us. And I got to tell you that it's just, hasn't been an enjoyable last two months because of the way Waste Management has been doing their job. Fred, would you show them that?
First, I have the same issue with the leaves pickups too. I just had a call from Molton Street tonight, same thing, same issues. I have a guy that takes care of his property unbelievably on South Street. He sent me this video from Saturday, not very happy, his place is unbelievable, and this is what happened to his barrels and.
Situation that happened with Waste Management.
Right here. This just came in. What happened is the driver, driver gets out of the truck and he goes after the barrels, he whips them over the snowbanks. The guy thought he was very angry, he actually went out there, then he broke his barrel right there. He also was told that he would receive a new barrel today, and he called me today before I came here and said he did not receive a new barrel. So we have, this happened Saturday, we have a date stamp on it and everything, and I can send it over to you, and we have pitches also, he also followed up with pitches. All right, but this is some of the stuff that all the counselors are dealing with and just want to make you aware of it.
Thank you, Counsel Hogan. Counsel Walsh.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a couple of questions. So it seems that you've been doing work here in the city for a number of years, that something has changed. Now, where does the yard waste get brought once it's left the city?
The yard waste gets brought to the wheel operator facility in Sagis. So you may be aware that's a waste energy facility, but it's also a composting pad there as well.
Okay. What gets brought to Bilricka? Is there a facility out there you guys?
Yes, recycling, single-stream recycling.
Okay. So when the trucks leave Lynn and they're full, and they have to drive to Bilricka, has that been an issue? Is this some, has the recycling facility been moved since the previous years? Like, or do they always go to Bilricka with the recycling?
Recycling, so we've been operating a facility in Bilricka for recycling since 2013. There have been points in time where we have brought recycling to Charlestown, to a different facility. But I would say that we've consistently been bringing recycling there for the last few years anyway.
Yeah, I just wondered if the time that the trucks are traveling to these facilities is having any effect on the pickups and the amount of trucks?
I don't think so. I mean, and I don't know that recycling is the biggest issue. I mean, obviously, I think the biggest thing that everybody has been getting complaints on is yard waste. So that, I don't think the recycling facility in Bilricka, I don't think is impacting that at all.
Okay. Is there one truck doing yard waste? Like what, how many trucks are out there?
So, I believe we've been having consistently two trucks in the city each day. And, I mean, this is sort of what I was getting at before when I was talking about how it's highly variable, so whether it's the volume of what comes off the trees at a given point in time, or whether it's what residents put out, it's unpredictable. So sometimes the two trucks is plenty to get it done, and honestly, there are times when it's not enough. So what we've striven to do, especially this past year, is if that hadn't been enough, if those two trucks hadn't provided the capacity, if you will, to get everything off the streets, we'd been letting the DPW know that, you know, specifically with the areas that weren't covered that day, and then we would be back the next day completing those. And most weeks, we got everything wrapped up by Friday, Saturday. So even with that, and, you know, even with the fact that, you know, we have a variable amount of volume with a fixed amount of number of assets that we're putting at that variable volume, it had been evening out for the most part by the end of the week.
So what do you think we're going to do going forward? Do you have a plan? And I drove around and I noticed, I'm in the city quite a bit, driving around, I noticed there's a lot of leaves out there still.
Yeah.
I know, I put in a request for Menlo Ave, and the woman actually reached out to Counsel Stavid and said that they picked up hers, but they left the two neighbors next door to us. So I guess if the truck's there, why can't they just go up and down the street and pick up whatever's there? Do we have to compile a list still?
So, well, actually, you know, at one point, I think up until just recently, we had asked everybody to put a list together, and that was our plan to operate off that list. But, you know, obviously, given the, kind of the severity of the situation and the level of concern and complaints that everybody's received, we've offered, just worked it out with Andy of the DPW, that we would be offering the city a whole week, just, we're going to run through the city, every street, every day, the whole route, the whole Monday route, Tuesday route, et cetera, Monday through Friday. It's a considerable cost to us, but we certainly value the relationship we have with the city and we realize the frustration that everybody here has, and the residents, of course, too, have experienced. And that's what we want to be able to offer to the city.
All right. Just one thing I want to add to it, is we have a lot of dumping that happens on the train tracks down in Westland where we, and a lot of the times I call on Lisa and Eric to make sure that somebody picks up those, and you guys do go by there and pick them up, my understanding, and you don't charge us for that. So I want to thank you for that. There are, you know, it sounds, there's a lot of things going on that we've got to deal with here and get to, but I think you guys, you know, I appreciate you doing that stuff for us.
Great, yes, we do that as a, you know, partner with the city, thank you for recognizing that.
Okay, before I recognize another counselor, I do want to recognize Mike Cole from the Mayor's Office in attendance here. Thank you, Mike.
I've got a question.
Counsel Lapia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you said, Ed, which week are you talking about? Was that next Monday, the 16th through the 20th? Or are you saying that this is the bonus week that we're currently in?
Starting, starting now, so what?
This week, starting yesterday.
Correct.
What about if you miss Monday, trash pickups yesterday?
Well, so I was talking specifically about yard waste.
That's what I mean, yard waste pickups. You missed some Ward One or Ward Two yesterday, leaf waste.
We, so, we started this yesterday and our intention was to pick up.
But you didn't get everything on Mondays, yesterday?
I'm going to, I'm going to address that.
All right.
So our intention was to pick up everything on Monday, along with the list that we had referenced, and we realized that there was so much out on Monday that we actually had to finish it today. So Mondays is being finished today, and we're going to continue working through the whole week.
So you backed up a day?
Yeah, so.
So Saturday you'd be ending your route instead of Friday?
I believe so, is that?
Hopefully we'll end by Friday.
Our plan is.
We'll be Saturday.
Like last week, like you said before. Get, compile the list by Friday and then address it this week, even though, through Saturday.
And so, and so what we recognize is that there are people who perhaps haven't called and they're just waiting, so we want to make sure that we capture all of those residents.
A lot of that's Ward One and Ward Two, those are a lot of the complaints I got. Also, just working backward from the calendar, I'm confused because I know you may have cross-referenced the years, but then there was a lot of, I think, some good ways to put this out, but we didn't do it properly to notify all residents, we know that. I don't want to beat the proverbial dead horse and go, you know, in revisionist history here, but going forward, in the creation of the calendar, when does that occur, between you and DPW?
So, the calendar is sent out ahead of the fiscal year, so usually a few months beforehand.
Like April, May, like spring of 2020?
Is that right, Lisa?
It's about a month before it expires. We work on it from January to May.
Because in subcommittee, so I'd like to just make a motion, we could deal with this now or later, but after discussion perhaps, but, Mr. Chairman, I would like to have one of our subcommittee representatives from this committee work with both DPW and Waste Management to ensure that the calendar goes out properly for 2020. Because when you're on the receiving end of these calls from various residents all weekend long and into the last few weeks, I should say, it's very disheartening when they're trying to understand that their printable looks different from what has been shared on social media, and then we're constantly sort of tailspinning because we don't have the answers. And thankfully, we have folks like Lisa who really troubleshoot and do their damnedest to make us look good, frankly, because they're on top of this by getting you the information you need to properly do your job. But at the same time, I think that's where the disconnect led to, and I really want to have some council eyes on the next calendar.
Counsel, are you volunteering for that?
Well, I would defer to the Chair, if the Chair would like to appoint.
Well, I don't think we need that position. If you're willing to volunteer.
Happy to sit down on Commercial Street this spring with the Commissioner and the Associate. I just volunteered myself and earned more work, so that's fine, that's fine.
To have a council rep work with the DPW and Waste Management on the calendar schedule, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing non-unanimous vote.
I've got a question. When will all the leaves be picked up? What's the deadline?
So what we're saying is Saturday.
Saturday, for sure.
14th.
For sure.
That's what we're.
People are going to stop burning them if they're not collecting.
Okay, also, there's recycling in my ward that hasn't packed around, Grovesventer Park and Grovesventer Way.
I'm sorry, what were the addresses?
Grovesventer Park and Grovesventer Way, they just called me, all upset, they missed the streets. And I told them, just leave it out, leave it out. I told the people with the leaves to leave it out, the bags are disintegrating now because the waste job. Hopefully they'll, is your plan just to bag to be disintegrated, the leaves will blow away?
No, that's not our intention, but our intention is to get them off the street.
I'd like to add something about the calendar. Thanks for your offer to help, Brian.
You're welcome.
For people watching this on TV or YouTube or wherever, to sign up for the city's Rave mobile notification system. I learned something with this whole fiasco about the power of this mailed-out calendar. And for real-time updates on both calendar and other city-related issues, I strongly recommend you sign up for the Rave mobile safety app. You can get phone calls, texts, or emails talking about, that would have been the perfect, we did not use it this time around.
Oh, okay, I was going to say, did you?
But we don't have a tool to reach out to people, and that's a very powerful tool.
So in the future, if there was change, you would be using the Rave system?
Right. And we appreciate that, but there's nothing like having a schedule on your refrigerator. And I think the majority of the complaints that I got, dozens, they would say that, you know, they don't, they're not into the technology. It's helpful, certainly helpful, but.
Was it in the item at all as well, I was asked if someone?
It was in the Lynn Journal, and we shared it with the counselors, the city's website was updated. But again, if you've got someone who's technologically challenged, we'll say.
Right.
They've got a piece of cardboard with a magnet on the fridge. And to, frankly, to mail out a, you know, it's $6,000 with a postage, it's not a trivial matter. So I encourage everyone to sign up for Rave mobile.
But now it's costing, well, it's not because of the generosity of Waste Management, but it would have cost so much more to do an extra run like this.
Absolutely. If I had known the troubles this would have caused, I would have mailed you two calendars.
Pennywise.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Shear.
Thank you. So, you're saying that you're going to have everything picked up by the following Saturday?
This Saturday.
This coming Saturday.
This coming Saturday. All right, so are you going to have trucks driving up and down every single street in the city between now and Saturday?
Trash route, trash route.
So people, because as the Commissioner just said, and it's clear that we're not communicating well with the public right now, so we got to make sure that every single street in the city has a truck driving down it, and if they see a bag of leaves, that those bags are going to be picked up. So where are you starting? Yesterday was Ward Two, the area where trash was being picked up. Today's Ward Three, it's finishing up on Ward Three heading into.
So, just to be.
Is that how you're doing it though, by the trash?
By the trash days. So we actually finished, I believe we finished Monday's trash day today.
Okay, so before we go any further, I have seen bags of leaves where the trash has already been picked up yesterday. Those bags have been sitting there all weekend over by the Rotary in Rick's Ward. So how are we going to go back and get those? There's five bags of leaves sitting on the sidewalk right now. The bags are ripped, leaves are blown everywhere, they're wet, it's been raining.
So you're saying that these are, it's on the Monday trash route?
Yep.
And they were there?
Monday, I saw them there on Sunday. Drove by them yesterday, saw them there, the barrels were out, and they're still there today.
And they're still there today?
Yeah.
Okay.
Fernwood? Fernwood or Stanwood, Darren?
It was maple, it was up, coming up maple into the Rotary.
When I hit the Rotary this afternoon, I looked at Stanwood, Fernwood, and I didn't see anything there. Cut up, Burdette, down Intervale, around Verona, that all, all that stuff was.
If you come out of the Rotary right there and you head down towards Flax Pond, they're right there, your left side. But I'm just saying, we got to make sure that we're really hitting every single street, terrace, place, because I've got a lot, you know, places off, down off Essex Street, Chatham Street, Dead Ends, Ocean Street area, and I know other wards have stuff. I just want to make sure that we're going to get to every single street, so.
That is our, that's our intention, to hit every street in the city.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just add one thing, I didn't, we got into some other conversation, I didn't want to not speak to your concern about the barrel and also about the video that you shared. Both of those situations are very concerning to me, and I know they are to our, you know, our whole management team. It's not the way we operate, that's not, those aren't the values that we encourage, and certainly that's something that we take very seriously. So what I would encourage everybody to do is if you do have a situation of something like that, or the barrel, please let us know, we need to know. We can't address those situations if we don't know about those situations. And I think those are of our.
And I think, um, those are of our, um, highest concern, because if, you know, these are the people that not only represent our company, but they also are the people that we rely upon to get the job done reliably. Um, so if somebody is, is, is acting like the way you showed there, um, you know, I, I'm not sure that, you know, we could-
The great thing about that is that video just came in and it was just from Saturday. So we knew we had this meeting tonight, which I told the constituent that I would address Waste Management and, um, he was very happy that we'd be addressing you tonight.
Yeah, if you could, if you could forward that to, to us, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. And I have photos too to go with, he's got a picture of the truck.
And the address that-
Everything, exactly.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, um, I, Counselor Starbitt and then Counselor Field, did you, okay?
Thank you, Counselor Lozey. Um, I wasn't gonna bring this up until I saw this video tonight, but I had, um, when folks call my house, it comes to my, to an app, so I can see when, when people call my house, even when I'm at work. And I had, um, a guy blowing my house phone up this morning and he, he called me like three or four times in a matter of three hours. And I, uh, I finally called him back and turns out he's a, uh, an employee. And I know, you know, as an employer myself, with, not everyone's happy all the time, but, you know, he, he said, I know you're gonna have this meeting tonight and I know, I know the kind of service that, you know, Lynn residents have been experiencing and, and I, I didn't reach out to any other councillors in Salem, but he said, you know, the same thing's going on in Salem and he mentioned another town. But he said it's, that the culture of the company's changed. There was some big management change nine months ago that's changed the culture of the company. Um, it's a dr, kind of, he, what he said, driver revolt. And as I saw that video tonight, um, I can definitely see that now, um, but I, I don't know what's changed. You know, this guy's been, said he was a longtime employee, he and others, uh, uh, you know, looking to get out if they haven't gotten out already. Um, so I don't know what's going on in the company, um, that, that would change employees' attitudes. But as an employer myself, you know, I, you know, I, I, I live and die on, on the backs of my employees and, and keeping them happy is, uh, is, is job one. Um, so I don't know what could've gone wrong to, to make somebody reach out to me and, and say things like that, or a guy to hop out of the truck and, you know, and, you know, show that kind of conduct when there's cameras everywhere. Everybody knows there's cameras everywhere. So, you know, maybe just, in management, take a step back and think about, you know, the drivers and, and what they may be experiencing and, and, uh-
Yeah, I mean, it's, it is, it is a tough job. I mean, there's no doubt about that. Um, you know, as far as, uh, management goes, I mean, I think what you just shared is something that I'll, I'll be sure to bring back to, to our management and make sure that we take that to heart.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pasic. Uh, Counselor Field, oh, just, just, if I could, thank you. Counselor Walsh?
Just real quick, I just wanna say, it, you know, I've, I've had the luxury of driving a truck around this city myself, you know, and it, I just want you to know, it's not an easy job and people at home, uh, it's hard driving your car around the city sometimes. So I, I think, um, C- Counselor Starbitt's right, you know, talk to your drivers, find out what's going on. This ain't an easy hurdle here. You start driving trucks around the city, you got snowbanks, i- it's a difficult job sometimes and they're under the gun. I mean, I appreciate those guys, I've, I've been there. So I, I think that's a good point, you know, if we can reach out to your drivers and see what their needs are and see if there's things that need to be addressed, cause it, it's hot, especially in the winter around here. It's very difficult to make the corners and we still need the job done right. That's something that all has to, and I think you would agree with that, but it's not, I don't wanna beat the drivers all up, cause man, this ain't an easy job and people aren't always so nice to those guys out there either, so, you know, just wanna throw that out there for a second.
I hear what you're saying, Counselor Walsh, but that's, that's not acceptable.
Okay. Thanks.
Uh, Counselor Field?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you for allowing, uh, the noncommittee members to speak tonight. Certainly a, uh, share in the frustration along with the rest of my colleagues. Dozens of complaints over the last few weeks, all regarding yard waste. You know, hats off to the ward councillors for probably getting the, the majority of those complaints. One question I do have, um, that you didn't touch on, do you have a, a route driver that just kinda supervises? Because I thought it was kinda silly to ask, um, councillors to compose a list when it's really every street. You know, the, the list that we would've composed are doing, doing the job of Waste Management. You know, it's, these are missed pickups. These aren't missed pickups in the past week, these are weeks. You know, just driving here tonight, I've passed at least 10 locations from my house to the City Hall tonight. And these bags that we've had on a list or supposed list, um, you know, I'm looking here and we, we can talk about composing a list to make your jobs easier. These are missed pickups. These aren't just over one week or they waited to the end or they, they looked at a calendar. These have been missed pickups. So do you have somebody that's supervising that can, is, is doing the job of making that list that you want?
Yeah, so I mean, ju- just in general, I mean, the normal process would be, I mean, if somebody did have a missed pickup, um, they, they call the DPW and, and then the DPW, uh, passes that along to us. So I think what we were, in, in, in the request to the councillors was just to say if, make sure nobody was getting missed, um, instead of bypassing that DPW if they're calling you, that we didn't wanna, we didn't want them to get forgotten about. So that, that's that. Um, but as far as supervision out on the street, we kinda have a two-level, uh, two-tiered supervisory approach where we do have a lead driver, um, and then we also have a route manager who's, who's responsible for the overall management of everything in the city. So, um, they are both out on the street, uh, and, uh, you know, some, some of the information that we get is, uh, is, is directly from them. So I mean, I think that's, it's, point is well taken, though I think we could probably make sure that, uh, we maybe do a better job with that.
I certainly share in, in the Council President's remarks of, of making sure you hit every street, because there are streets that aren't gonna make a list. And the frustration's there and they, maybe they haven't reached out to us, or maybe they haven't reached out to DPW and that frustration's just continuing to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair will rec, the vice chair will recognize Chair Lozey.
Yes, thank you, uh, Counselor Lapiere. Um, Mr. Pasic, I, uh, just had some questions for you regarding the contract you may or may not, uh, be aware of. City of Lynn pays Waste Management pretty good money for this contract. Would you agree?
I think it's a fair rate.
Okay, fair rate. And do you have a rough idea of what the city pays? A year?
For all services?
Yeah, we'll include the tipping fees, the fuel, everything, yeah.
Well, the tipping fees are, are-
Separate, but-
Are separate, they're paid to wheel grader.
Then delete them, whatever, just a rough amount, $4 million?
I think it's, I think it's above that.
Okay. Last year, and, and the yard waste is part of that contract, right? For Waste Management to pick it up?
Yes.
Okay. And last year, do you, are you aware of the tonnage of the yard waste that was picked up last year compared to this year?
For the whole year or for?
The whole year.
I think for the whole, well, I know for, for November, which is, I think, what, what we were just talking about, um, the November tonnage year over year was a little bit less this year.
In fact, it was 50% less.
Um, I don't know if it was 50% less or not, but-
Well, it says here that in November of 18, the leaf tonnage was 602 tons for 2018. For 2019, it was 443 tons. So that's almost 50%. 40%?
30%. Anyway, um, I, I agree that and acknowledge that it's less.
160 tons? Okay, 30%. But that's, that's a significant reduction for, over last year. And, and what I'm, what I wanna point out, Mr. Pasic, is I know Counselor Walsh praised Waste Management for the good things you've done, and that's all fine and well, but we're here tonight because of the performance issues with Waste Management. Frankly, the month of November has been awful, awful. These, these are the missed calls just in the month of November, and, and there's quite a few of them. And we, as a body, we're getting pretty tired of this and we're, you know, we've heard a lot of good questions here trying to get to the root of what the problem is, but, um, you know, you did mention that it's not a regular service, the yard waste, so you haven't, I guess, more inexperienced drivers doing that work, is that correct?
Inexperienced in, in the city of Lynn, um, with the streets, uh, specific to this community.
Okay, but-
But not necessarily new to the job. I don't, I don't wanna give that impression.
Right, okay. So we need some experienced drivers on the yard waste pickup in order to really solve this problem?
Well, they're, just to be clear, their experience with yard waste collection, just, they just may not, um, know the, the streets of, of Lynn as well as the, the regular trash and recycling drivers.
Okay. All right, well, I, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but we're not happy with the performance of Waste Management, particularly in the area of the yard waste. I mean, there have been a lot of complaints about the tr, missed trash, misrecycling, but you do, how, how many houses in the city of Lynn that you service?
It's about, uh-
Twenty?
Twenty thou, about 20,000 or so?
20,000 or so? Okay, and that's quite a few, so there is, in a matter of regular course of work, it, it's understood you'll miss some. But we really need an improvement. We think that, um, your performance for the month of November on the yard waste was very lacking. You know, at this point, I'd like to call up Attorney Markopolis. George, uh, you and I spoke earlier and there, there's a clause in the contract where we can, uh, we can put Waste Management on notice-
And terminate them?
Well, I don't, I don't think we're looking to terminate here, unless there's a councillor that's looking to terminate Waste Management. But, uh, before we were to go that far, is there some kind of a notification that we should be, uh, making Waste Management aware in writing that, uh, we can put them on notice?
I, I think you have to, Counselor, as we spoke earlier, I think we have to build a record. I think, uh, the Law Department should work with the DPW and the council and document all these various issues, uh, all of them, I've heard numerous of them this evening. And I think you should authorize the Law Department to consolidate all these issues and send a, a legal letter to Waste Management short of exercising Section 7 determination clause and putting them on notice that, uh, these items, uh, are of great concern to the city and asking them for, to put a plan into place in writing so that we've built a record. So if that, this does happen in the future, you'll have justification to move forward with another legal step.
Okay, that, I, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put that, uh, as a motion.
A motion, a, a letter of reprimand, uh-
Yes.
Once we consolidate all the complaints, uh, Waste Management, uh, begin what would term as progressive discipline so that they track record, uh, going forward on the contract. Have a motion there and seconded by C- uh, Counselor Calucci, you're on the, can he motion that? Okay. Seconded by Counselor Calucci. Discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I, and I think that-
Counselor Lozey.
This is just one more step that we need to take and, and hopefully that we're gonna see improvement from Waste Management. And, um, again, we don't, we're not looking for perfection, but we would like to see some improvement on, on all of the aspects and, uh, and hopefully we can come to that